All right, good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, October 15th, 2025. We're in the Eldon F. Morelle Board of Selectmen Meeting Room on the second floor of Town Hall. The time is 6:30 PM. Before we stand for the pledge, please be aware that this meeting is being recorded for use on the Internet and our local cable station. If you can stand, I would ask you to stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first item on tonight's meeting is a vote to approve a change of manager, change hours request for AZ Ventures doing business as Hockamock Liquors. The company I work for has a business relationship with Hockamock Liquors, so I'm going to recuse myself at this point, this moment, from this meeting and turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Lee.
Hi. So, okay, so we've got a motion, or not a motion, I'm sorry. You wanted to change the manager of Hockamock Liquors?
Yes, we're applying to change the manager. And Mr. Woodson Chargery is with me tonight. He is the person that we'd like to appoint with your approval, of course. Mr. Chargery has many years of experience in managing different packaged stores, convenience stores, what have you. So he brings a lot of knowledge to the table. And we're also applying to increase the hours of operation, adding an hour each night essentially from 10 to 11.
Okay. All right. Did you have anything you wanted to say? How long have you been doing it or managing?
Since 1991.
Okay, so you have a lot of experience and you've worked in several places?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. And you would be starting, would that be effective immediately?
Yeah, I mean, he's kind of already in there.
Yeah, okay, so you're just taking over.
Yes.
I do have a question. Do you have any questions about our town alcohol policy or any of our policies or procedures or anything?
Mark, for a moment, because I read all the directions, everything, all the instructions.
Okay, and you don't have any questions on them? If you do have any questions on them, we do have resources in town that can assist you. Please contact our office and make sure if we'd rather not see an issue in the future. So please reach out if you have any questions.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
And then just staying open till 11 is there. Do we have any issue with that in town?
There is no issue with that. And also, I'll advise the board that the police department has done the investigation. There is no problem with the applicant. The applicant has signed the liquor license.
Any future inspections or anything?
Not this. They will be at year end, but not for this.
Not for this, okay.
All right. Any other questions, anything? Do you have no questions for us or anything? No, you're good? Okay. Well, then I guess I will entertain a motion to approve the change of manager and change of hours request from AZ Ventures doing business as Hockamock Liquors.
I'll second and vote in favor.
Aye.
All right, great.
You're all set.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, moving along. On the next section warrants board of selectmen business. First up is a vote to ratify Casey Kogun's employment as a firefighter slash paramedic. Chief?
Okay. Casey comes to us with an extensive paramedic background. We interviewed about 15 people total for the whole position. And Casey's resume, it was clear that she was the top candidate for the position that was available. And happy to have her, and she'll start Sunday.
Woo, Sunday.
Wonderful.
Jump right in.
Do you want to tell us a little about yourself?
Well, I've been a paramedic for the past 16 years and also worked in a firefighter for the past three. Very excited to become a closer home. And thank you very much.
Wonderful.
That's awesome. I already met the family.
I have my husband.
Young man back there.
Andy smiled. That's the first smile.
Be serious. Well, I mean, I don't know if you've been around the team yet. You're joining a great team. Phenomenal leadership, as you can see. All of us here in this room have nothing but support for all of our public safety. So we are excited. If he's excited to have you on, we're all super ecstatic to have you on. So we're excited to see all the great things you're about to do in town.
Yeah, just a big welcome aboard. You know, listen, grow, follow your leadership. It's a strong group.
Yeah, great group.
And we'll go from there. But very happy to have you. Congratulations to all of you.
Yeah, now you're all stuck with us, too.
Yeah. We're all a little filed.
Anybody in the back want to say anything?
No.
No? Oh, I wasn't going to Linda. I wish you thought, Linda, you're more than welcome inside. But I don't know if the children, the young adults had comments. So, all right. We're hearing other comments. I'll make a motion to ratify Casey Kogun's employment as a firefighter slash paramedic.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Excited to have you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Great to meet you. Thank you, it's good luck.
Have a good one.
Sir.
See you soon. See you next week.
Well, Scott, you know how to clear a room.
That's right.
Next on the agenda is Scott Gold, our treasurer, our annual vote to award the bid for the municipal purpose loan to UniBank at this time point.
That's right. The total borrowing is for just over $1.5 million, which is the lowest we've had in a while, I believe. So we ended up only getting the one bid from UniBank. That came in at 3.95%, which is a little higher than last year. We were about 3.4% last year. Market's a little uncertain right now. I mean, it's a small bid, small loan, so we weren't going to get a ton of bids. Do you have any questions on the ban?
No, I'm familiar with it from the last two, so.
Yep, yeah, there's no new projects on there this year. Next year, we'll start working on the fire engine.
Is that like a million?
1.1, 1.2.
It was 800.
Oh, that one. Well, there's another one coming, though.
Yeah, okay, well, that one will be in a minute.
Yep.
So we'll just need everyone to sign a little bit of paperwork here. First up is the actual note itself.
Just because somebody always asks, Scott, how much do we owe on the school? Do we owe? Ballpark?
Around 20. I think we're just getting under 20 soon.
So 10 years into a 30, around 20 makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
The second one is the certificate of the town clerk. It's got all the borrowing information on it. The final one's the certificate saying that it's tax exempt. And we just have two copies of that. Thank you.
I just bought a house.
That was easy if you bought a house.
It was an expensive house.
Nice house.
Thank you.
Cool.
That's all I got.
Thank you very much.
Looking easy.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Scott.
That's it.
Moving along, a vote to approve an application for one day liquor license for St. Anne's Parish on November 16th of 2025.
Yeah, straightforward, just a one day liquor license for that date.
And we'll also vote to waive the fees as a nonprofit in town. Super. All right. Any discussions? We have a, there's a flyer in front of us. Looks like Dan Clark, the singing trooper.
Hmm, that sounds interesting.
130. Snacks, coffee, tea, cash, beer, wine. Sounds good. Any discussions? Hearing none. I'll make a motion to approve the application for one day liquor license for St. Anne's Parish on November 16th, 2025. And also with that motion, vote to waive fees.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Super. All right. First half calendar for next year for our meetings.
So we'll see on the left-hand side, there's your meeting dates. We, at this point, have just standard dates, which is your first and third Wednesday of every single month. As the board knows, if there are changes or anything we have to amend, we can easily do so. That doesn't lock anyone in. The important dates are listed on the right-hand side. At this point, following past protocols, you'll see we would have May 11th of 2026 as your tentative date for your annual town meeting. And on the left-hand side, again, on the meeting dates, one thing to call your attention to is that your February, March, and April meetings will basically be dominated by budget presentations.
At this moment, I have no issues. So I don't need to do anything on this, right? Just moving on.
As long as you're, I guess I would ask you just to vote to accept it because we will make the postings in advance. But again, we'll change and amend if you need to.
Okay. I'll make a motion to vote on the first half calendar, the 2026 Board of Selectmen meetings and important dates as shown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Next, approve the meeting minutes of September 10th, 2025. Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for September 10th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of the September 24th, 2025 meeting for review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Communications from boards, commissions, town officials, we have none. Correspondence from the public, we have none. Public comment period, we have none. Town administrators report.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just a couple of FYI's. As you know, every single year, Berwick Boys does the selling of their Christmas trees. So again, we will, they will have their, they will start on November 2029th and conclude around, on December 21st. Every year, also YA does their Turkey Trot Road Race. That'll be November 15th. It's posted from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM. The race starts around 8:30 in the morning. The police chief has already signed off on the route. The next one, you know, credit to our police department. They applied for it and received a $30,000 grant. It comes as a block grant from the federal government to the state government. The Healy administration put out a press release on it late last month week, so the police department will be able to use those funds. The one thing I do want to call your attention to, I purposely put this entire list because 171 communities in the state of Massachusetts received them. Interesting, not a single community on here that is non-compliant with MBTA received it. There is nothing that my knowledge that specified specifically stated as such, except that the facts are what the facts are. For example, you'll see since we're on W's, you'll see the town of Winthrop is not on there and they're one of the towns that did not do it. So I'm honestly and sincerely surprised by that because these are federal dollars, these are not state dollars. They're not supposed to be subject to the MBTA compliance rule. That's probably why it's not in writing, but again, that's speculation on my part. But at the end of the day, I just wanted to inform you that we did a nice job. They applied for the grants, we received the grants, but it's also noticeable as to who did not receive them. Next one is your aggregation report. I provide this every single quarter just to show that it is working. We'll see in quarter 20 of 2025, which is April through June of 2025, that our residents saved almost $97,000 by participating in the program. And you can see over the past, you know, over the past year, that there was about $650,000 in total savings over one year period of time. So $10 or $12 a month might not sound like much, but if you could save it and it's aggregate, it comes out to a lot of money.
I feel like, you know, this goes down partly because the entire town was enrolled basically at once when it first started. And as houses have turned and things have turned, like, there's no automatic enrollment anymore, right?
There is automatic enrollment if you enter and you are on a national grid bill. So if there were residents that already had aggregated on their own, meaning that they went out and did it, we would not know that.
But if I'm new and I move into town, I buy a house, am I automatically on this or do I have to do something to be on?
You are supposed to be automatically on it. But again, our consultant handles that.
Okay.
So, but I think on that note, if we could state again that on next Thursday night, at the Council on Aging from 5:00 to 8:00, National Grid is holding a customer advocate evening. And so that way, they're going to go over whatever programs are available. And it was your request specifically about making sure that we had somebody from the aggregator there. And I reached out to the consultant and they will be there. So they'll have their own table and National Grid is aware that they will be there as well. So anybody that's listening to this that is unsure, would like to participate, maybe they don't know how to sign up, they need some help signing up, they could be there that night and speak to them. And I'm sure they could walk you through it because literally, it's a one minute, it takes one minute to do. But I think that's a good point to make sure people are aware.
Yep.
Next is net school spending. So we're required by state law to do this. I have to provide it by September 30th of every year. And we certainly did that. If we could go to the next page, please, or the one before. So this page is really the page that shows what we spend, not just on education, but where the town also spends dollars that is not specifically going to the school. So in the third column to the right, what our actual was for FY 2025, there's administrative costs. That is a formula that we use, accurate or not accurate, that's what they want, the state wants us to use, we do it. Then the next line is for instructional purposes, meaning what we funded at town meeting for the school. Employee benefits as such, things as health insurance, workers' comp insurance. And the next one is for school building insurance. So that means we spent about $23 million. So at town meeting, we approved $18 million or so for their budget, but there was another $5 million that the town has paid for that is not on that chart. So that really is our real spending in reference to the school. And you'll see at the bottom, that's at $23,277. The state requires the town of West Bridgewater and its local school to spend just under $16 million. So we far exceed that. In fact, it's $7 million and 45% over is where we are. The state average is actually in the 30s. I still think that's kind of ridiculous to be, I mean, there's something wrong with the formula.
Right.
If everybody is 30% over, everybody is spending too much or the net school spending requirements from the state is too low. Nobody should be always 30% over. Obviously, we're at 45. So I think, you know, the state recognizes that there's an issue with the formula, and I know that's why they're going to revisit it. One item note, though, is that we have what they call above the line spending, which is the $23 million. Then we have what they refer to as the below the line spending. So you'll see other school spending, transportation, fixed assets debt. So that totals another $4 million. That is the debt that we're paying for the middle, senior, high school. That is for transportation costs that are inside the budget. I can't tell you why, but for whatever reason, those numbers are not factored in to net school spending. So while it shows on the report that goes to the state that we spent $23 million or $7 million more, we actually spent on the school, a school-related activity such as debt, $27 million. And I remind that our entire budget is around $42 to $44 million. So we are well, you know, we're in that 60% plus range when you put it all together.
That's mainly because of the loan for the school or whatever is in that other $4 million? Because if that's the case, then we're above that, above it by almost like 85%, 90%?
We would be another $4 million. I didn't do the percent, but yeah, that's what it is. But you're entirely right.
Because from 15992, that's, I mean, that's almost 30,000, 30 million, that's almost double.
Yeah, so you'll see right above the 23,277, the total amount is 27,491. So whatever 27,491 is over 15 million, you're right, that would be, you know, it'd be over 55%.
Almost 75?
But all told, if somebody said, how much did we spend as a town to support our entire school system? According to this report, we spent 27, and these are actual numbers, not budgeted, we spent, there was $27,491,000 spent on the entire school program. And of that, for example, $2.3 million was for debt service for the new senior high school. Just to reinforce that point. So anyway, we sent this over to the school and then we do projections for FY 26. The projections of FY 26 look lower because obviously actuals will come in, whatever they come in. But when we do the actuals, that includes school choice money.
Hey, I have a question. I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
In, on the town meeting, where does that additional $4 million show up?
Yep, so 900,000 of it is in transportation. That shows up inside the school budget.
Okay.
$2.3 million is inside our 7,500 and 7,510 debt services budget. $1,800,000, it goes to Southeastern Regional. That shows up in budget 3,200.
But that's under the school still, right?
That is not under the local school, that is a separate school.
Okay.
But that means that we, as a school system, we spend almost 27, 20, over $27 million in FY 25 for educational purposes. Any questions about that?
Oh, no, you're good. I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
Pause for effect.
There's a lot of numbers and a lot of information.
I was trying to write them down. It's like, I can't keep up. We'll watch the video.
I think we have a very good school system, and I think the town does a very good job of supporting it. Next is really good news, River Street. So if you drive down and you'll see the entire project is done for River Street, you'll recall that we had to do that in phases based on funding. About a few years ago, we started a committee. What we're going to do with sidewalks, and again, this ties into the school system, because we felt that we had to make sure that there was going to be adequate sidewalks for the children who had to walk. And so we started at that time. We put a sidewalk down Howard Street that did not exist. We have done now all of River Street, and we extended the sidewalk down 106 towards the center of town and for the Council on Aging because it didn't exist prior. So we've done all of that. The next part to the loop is now to connect River Street all the way up South Elm Street up to Lincoln Street. And you'll know that the project that is ongoing and unfortunately continuously ongoing at the Lincoln Street intersection, they, at their expense, did the entire sidewalk on Lincoln. So this is now going to create a nice big loop where everything is going to connect. As part of that, we have applied for it and received $171,000 from the state that can go towards sidewalks. That was money that we had not initially budgeted towards South Elm, so that's going to help. Because we really thought it was going to take two full years to do sidewalk in South Elm, and we're thinking that with this extra money, we may be able to get it done next year. We're working through those numbers now. So the positive news is River Street is entirely done, so people that want to walk on that road can freely and safely do so. We will now turn our attention to connecting the sidewalk on River Street to Lincoln Street over the next year. And then once we're done that entire sidewalk project, we will then come back and at that point say, okay, where do we turn to next? Last important item of note is that you'll see, and I put it in highlighted font, is that that money is subject to clawback if we do not pass MBTA. We are technically compliant until the end of the year because of our status as a small adjacent community. As you know, we are going to town meeting on Monday night to vote on the MBTA Act. I have no problem admitting and saying this. I think it is a bad piece of legislation. I don't think it's going to have the desired impact, and I think it's unfair as to the amount of energy that the state has done this to sue municipalities in the town of Winthrop, for example, that qualified for $1.2 million in funding to build a seawall. The Healy administration took that money back, and then after this last storm, there was water that spilled over into the town. That wall certainly could have helped. I think that's unfair. It is what it is. That's the law. So unfortunately, I do think we're going to have to vote on it and comply on Monday evening. But this is just one example that these funds would be, would be subject to clawback if we do not pass it.
No, and I was going to add another note to that because your B, which is page 71 and 79, where we, the police department getting a grant. And I think it's important to note that, like, it's important not passing that bill, although I'm not in favor of the direction of the state, we will lose funding like that. So like, all in all with this, that'd be almost $200,000 if these two were to combine.
You're entirely right. And there is others. And we've already put a slide together, so we will have those numbers available at town meeting. But there's no doubt when you talk about numbers in this amount, it's punitive in nature. And I don't think that was the original intent of the law, but that's become the ultimate result.
My question is, so it's interesting because you highlighted that sentence, and I appreciate that because that, that's, I mean, it's, it's in black and white right there. Like, that's, are there, is that, have we gotten other notes, like, with that kind of verbiage in it? Like, is that letters, is that becoming a common paragraph?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was.
And there was a blanket letter or email, I forget which, that said that going forward, that all of them would be subservient to this language. So, but that, a past president said this, elections have consequences. So this is the, this is the public policy of the governor's office. She has a right to enforce the public policy that she sees fit since she was elected, and this is, so this is the result of that. Next item, I just put on the agenda is for rent control. So every year, we are always looking for volunteers for numerous boards. But I'm specifically highlighting rent control because it has become a pinch point over the last handful of months. We have two rent control, or we have two mobile home parks that are subservient to subject to the rent control board. And it was intended to make sure that there was fairness between what the owner is able to recoup for expenses and what the residents there are charged. There's not a lot of heavy lifting because you can literally go years without meeting. But every three to five years, depending on what is approved, is that either the residents or the owner can petition for either a new contract or an amended contract. So for example, there are legitimate charges that go up on an annual basis for everybody. Taxes, for example, is one of them. Utilities is another one of them. The owner has a right by law, by statute, by our bylaw, by the rent control rules and regulations to be able to recoup those expenses. But that means you have to have an agreement that is up to date to do that. The residents have a right to make sure that there are not charges that are being put in there that shouldn't be in there, and they are charged the reasonable rate. And therefore, they are, for lack of a better term, not being hoodwinked. And that is the role of the rent control board. It's a five-member board, and right now, we only have four members. However, for various reasons, there are multiple members that are struggling to be able to make those meetings. And so we have residents sometimes and/or the owner of that park that will sit waiting for a board member to show up for half an hour or 45 minutes or an hour, waiting for business to get done. And in other times, we try to call a meeting and we can't because we're not going to have quorum. And in my opinion, that is not fair to the board members who are showing up that are waiting. It's not fair to the residents because they really depend on this board to be able to have their best interests for them. And it's not fair to the owner because the owner has made an investment, and we have an obligation to all three parties to make sure that they come together and come up with a reasonable agreement for all sides. So I place it on here, I'm putting a special emphasis because both owners and both residents have now filed for their respective petitions, and they're all looking for action, and they're not wrong. They have a right to do that. So with that said, I'm putting a plea out there. If you have a desire to serve, we have a desire to have you serve. We need assistance on this. And so please reach out to the selectmen's office if you have some time and are willing to do so.
Is there anything else that we could do in order to assist this if we can't, if we don't get any volunteers? we don't get any volunteers?
Not really, I mean, it's, it's just a, it's a board, and so there's nothing we can do special to determine like quorum requirements.
So in, in order to do right from the residents, we need people to step up?
We really do.
It becomes too complicated for us to be on it, because it would also be a board meeting.
Yeah, because I'm on it, so you guys couldn't be on it.
I mean, I guess that would be the only thing we could do, right? Put us on it, call the Board of Selectment meeting, and have the rent control meeting, which is not what it should be getting up.
No, I mean, that, worse comes to worse if there's, you know, an option, but yeah, no, just right now, like, like David said, we do have two petitions in front of us from both parks right now, and it's a lot of work, it's very tedious to go through, you know, you've got to go through everything, and it's a lot, we've got binders this big, you know, and we've got to go through it, so, and we've got them both going right now, so it is very tedious, and we have several, several meetings, and not everybody can make it, everybody has lives, and this wasn't meant to be a board that, that would meet very often, but during these times and, and in this process, we do have to meet more often, because we can't go through the books in private, right, like we have to do it in an open meeting and discuss that in an open meeting, so we all have to get together to do that, but we don't have enough people.
And just because I don't want to make it sound like it'd be, I don't want to scare anyone, the committee does have a really good administrative person that acts as a staff person, and we engage with legal counsel on this as well, because these are legal documents, and it's a legal decision that you're making. So it's not like somebody doesn't have to say, oh geez, I don't have the proper experience or the proper knowledge, nobody knows, nobody's born knowing, everybody accumulates it over time, but there is support, so again, if somebody is able to volunteer and be willing to volunteer, please contact the selectmen's office. Special town meeting, we've alluded to it a few times tonight, just a reminder to the board, it is Monday night, it is October twentieth, it will start at six PM, the moderator will be there, and so, so he will be moderating the meeting. We have posted you at five-thirty, as we always do, so that way if there is any last-minute business that we have to conduct specific to town meeting that night, we can do that. The finance committee will be there, they are meeting tomorrow night to go over the, and make their recommendations, they will be posted at five-thirty as well, so they'll be sitting for the meeting as well. As you know, there are three warrant articles, two zoning, and one is a prior year's bill. And then your next meeting at this point is scheduled for November fifth.
That's it, play a luncheon. Not on here for next Friday?
That's correct.
Anything else?
I got nothing.
Nothing.
All right.
I hope to see people there, I hope everybody comes out, eats some food.
Yep, so that, entertain, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.